Good evening. I want to welcome you to our regular scheduled board meeting of the Akron School Board, and at this time, roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present. At this time, we're grateful to also welcome those who are seated at the table with us, our newly elected board members, N.J. Akbar, Derek Hall, Valen Kendrick, and of course, our student board member Nathaniel Smith from Ellett C.L.C. At this time, we will be led in our pledge allegiance, and our student school board member, Nathan Smith, will lead us in our pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Nathan was just recognized a couple of weeks ago in the Beacon Journal for being one of our outstanding students, as he not only represents us as a student board member, but he represents us well as a student at Ellett, along with his twin sister. They have done an excellent job there representing Ellett C.L.C. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[133.44][133.44](Applause).
We will, because we have several special things that we will be doing this evening, dispense with our community and school reflections, and we do not have anyone to address the school board, but we will have, thank you, expressions from our student board member. Once he is ready, we'll have some comments from Nathan.
Nathaniel. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Nathaniel Smith, and I'm a senior at Ellett C.L.C., and I'm in the Kyoga Valley National Park Global Marketing and Media Pathway. As a part of the season of giving, the Ellett Orangemen Student Body gathered almost 2,000 items for the Good Neighbors Organization from November 11th until November 22nd. The purpose of the food drive is to help families and individuals in the Akron area that are in need of food during the holiday season. The head of the food drive was student council chair and English teacher, Ms. Kelly Smith. Students brought the canned foods and non-perishable items in the school before the concession stand in the main hallway. The 45-member student council team counted and packed the food for pickup by Good Neighbors. Ellett C.L.C. Organizations partnered with Suma Health Akron Campus Volunteer Services Department to craft over 500 holiday ornament trays. And I will let you guys pass these around for you guys' viewing. The ornaments go on meal trays to over 500 patients at Suma Health Akron Campus. The ornaments are designed to bring holiday cheer and smiles to patients and their families. Student ambassadors, cheerleaders, student council, key club, and students with multiple disabilities created the crafts before, during, and after school. National Junior Honor Society students are creating blankets for cancer patients going through chemotherapy and radiation. These initiatives are a partnership with Jessica Goff, an Ellett parent and coordinator for Suma Health Volunteer Services, English teacher Ms. Kelly Smith, and academy coach Mr. Ron Boldry. Ellett students and my marketing pathway worked with partners and some worked individually to provide gifts for children staying at the battered women's shelter. We received a list of students' likes and interests. From the list, we then chose gifts we felt that children would enjoy. We ordered the items from Amazon. The items arrived at Ellett, and we have started the process of wrapping the gifts. The gifts will be delivered the week of December 16th by the, oh, by Thomas Limousine. My peers and I will meet the limousine at the shelter and hand the gifts to the students. This project was headed by my marketing teacher, Mr. John Malinowski. Funds for this project were raised by Sales in my Marketing Pathway's Marketing Education Store. Excuse me. Imagine how many people APS students could help if we all came together and did a project that gave to people who are in need. I think this would improve the morality of students, parents, and teachers across Akron Public Schools. I think it would make people feel good about themselves, and by helping others who are not as fortunate as they are. I know that when students, teachers, and parents feel good about themselves, it makes schools and our environment a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments of Nathaniel?
Can I just give Nate a shout out? He also represented the student school board and Akron Public Schools. He recently taped a TV show that's going to air, and he represented us, and I had mixed up my calendar, and I was supposed to be there with him, and he managed to carry the whole thing by himself and did so, from what I hear, incredibly professionally, which doesn't surprise any of us at all, but just a huge shout out to not only representing us well, but all of the students at Ellett and in the district.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We're going to our recognitions portion of our agenda. We do want to recognize our special guests from the University of Akron, and they'll have a few more things to say as we move forward, but we do want to recognize the president, the new provost, and I want to say Annie Hansen, but she's a new person now.[424.62][424.62](Laughter). Last name. So we'll acknowledge him in a few minutes, once we move through our agenda. At this time, we have recognition of our superintendent.
It's my pleasure this evening to represent the county today, which are big shoes to fill. This is for Dr. James. This is a proclamation declaring the November 14th, when we celebrated his Lee Birth Award win, this was a proclamation from the county declaring it David W. James Day, which is a pretty big day. So, yes.[467.12][467.12](Applause). I'm going to hit the highlights here. Whereas David James earned his bachelor degree in economics from Cleveland State in public administration, and in August '08, the Akron Board of Education selected Mr. James to be the superintendent, the 22nd executive of the Akron School System overseeing 20,000 pupils, 3,000 employees, and operating more than 40 school buildings; and whereas he's the 2017 recipient of both the Ohio School Board Outstanding Performance Award and the Martha Holding Jennings Award, and for the glass half-full from the G.A.R. Foundation honoring leaders for their inspiring and optimistic guidance of nonprofit organization. He became a true community leader as the head of the Buckeye Association for School Administrators, receiving a community award from Project Red in 2017, an honorary alumni award from the University of Akron in 2013. He's a graduate of leadership back in class, what class? Twenty-four.[531.54][531.54](Laughter). In '07, and recipient of the Harold K. Stubbs Humanitarian Award, and along with his dedicated staff and community partners, he has successfully developed key programs to prepare high school students for career success following graduation. Most recently, he's led the partnership with the LeBron James Family Foundation, creating the I Promise School, targeting at-risk third graders who've fallen behind their peers, resulting in a unique concept and partnership. Therefore, Irene Shapiro, Eileen Shapiro, the Summit County Executive, proclaims Thursday, November 14th, 2019, to be David James Day. Congratulations.[572.12][572.12](Applause).
And now, we have a special recognition. Blue Ribbon School, our Akron Early College High School, National Blue Ribbon School. Akron Early College High School received the 2019 National Blue Ribbon Award from the United States Department of Education. They received this award in the category of exemplary highest performing schools, placing them among the state's highest performing schools as measured by the state assessment or nationally-normed tests. In 2013, Early College received this award for the same reason, making them a two-time National Blue Ribbon School. The U.S. Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, had this to say about this special recognition. "As a national blue ribbon school, your school demonstrate what it is possible when committed educators hold all students and staff to high standards and create vibrant, innovative cultures of teaching and learning." On November 15th, 2019, Betsy DeVos presented Akron Early College High School with their award on behalf of the Department of Education. There were two other high schools in Ohio, Solon High School and Menster Junior and Senior High School, receiving the 2019 National Blue Ribbon Award as exemplary high performing schools. The coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. Now, in its 37th year, the National Blue Ribbon Schools program has bestowed recognition on more than 9,000 schools. It is our honor to recognize the Akron, from the Akron Board of Education, to celebrate our own Early College High School as a recipient of this award twice in six years. I would like for all of the staff, the principal, and students who represent Early College to stand, and as they're standing, would accept the president of the University of Akron and its provost would come at this time. Please join me in congratulating the students, staff, and administrators for their hard work and dedication to being a National Blue Ribbon School.[768.62][768.62](Applause). And she really never wants to be in the spotlight, and Mrs. Connolly, please.
Congratulations. Thanks, little man. Appreciate it. Sure. Okay. All right. So I prepared some words so I wouldn't cry. It's usually my MO when I get talking about my school.
And as she is preparing, the Akron Board of Education recognizes and congratulates the staff and students of the Akron Early College High School upon earning the distinction of again being designated a National Blue Ribbon School 2019, given by, signed by our superintendent and by the president of the school board, myself, done December 9th, 2019.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We truly appreciate this time being recognized by the board for being a National Blue Ribbon School. We'd like to thank the Akron Board of Education and David and Ellen, Mark and Tamiko, as well as University of Akron, Dr. Miller, Dr. Ergo, Annie Hansen-Halair.[862.82][862.82](Laughter). All right. She's just Annie. Kelly, Harold, Jenny Austin, Liz Kennedy, for the continued support of our school, as well as all the Akron family directors. Really, it's a collaborative effort for our success. We couldn't, you know, nothing is ever done in isolation. Having all of you as our partners allows us to work diligently to create an educational environment that excels helping our students achieve their dreams. The teachers at Akron Early College work tirelessly to help our students be successful in and out of their classrooms. They work in tandem with the office staff and our counselor and lead teacher to make sure our school is the best it can be. We work together to support one another, the students and their families. The students at AECHIS are gritty, they're fun, and they're ultimately the worker bees that have won this recognition for us. Their families entrust us with a 14-year-old child to attend the high school on a major university campus. Our students volunteer, they have strong social skills, and perpetuate strong habits of mine. The consistent support we get from our families has allowed us to maintain our culture of academic success. Early College is a highly academically performing school. We have won this award now twice in 10 years. At the ceremony in DC in November, 362 schools won this award. Seventy won it for the second time. Five won it for three or more times. So we now have our challenge for the next five years.[955.12][955.12](Laughter). Yearly, the AECH staff self-reflex on things we can do to improve our school. This year, with the added support of the College and Career Academy implementation, we have been able to provide hands-on career exploration for students with the goal of developing students' vision for the future. We are continuing to expand this exposure to real-world skills next year with job shadowing and internship opportunities. We believe this will, we believe that this will enhance achievement and post-secondary persistence. We sincerely thank Akron Public Schools for all the opportunities the Akron and early, the College and Career Academies of Akron have provided for our school. We want to thank the University of Akron for committing time and talent to support our transformation for our students, and we thank the College of Applied Science and Technology for being a wonderful academic partners for the past 13 years. Lastly, again, we want to thank the Board of Education this evening, and please know that we are APS proud.[1016.38][1016.38](Applause).
First, let me, let me say to the school board, this is the first time I've been here, and I deeply appreciate your work. This is very important work in any community, and I know it takes a lot of time, but you can see this evening some of the fruits of that work, so thank you. At the University of Akron, we're deeply honored to be part of this partnership. The provost and I have been in higher education collectively probably over 60 years. This is a very unique partnership. It's one that we cherish, and having had just a few minutes with some of the students in the back of the room, it's very easy to see that these are leaders of this community in the years to come. And standing here beside this education leader makes me humble, and I just want to say with deep respect to her and to the staff, faculty here, who we share with, who are also part of our family, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing for these young men and women and for this community, and we deeply appreciate it, and we're very excited about getting a third of these. We will do everything we can to help you do that. So thank you all.[1115.14][1115.14](Applause).
We're just going to pause so that we can take a historical picture of what is transforming or transforming tonight, what's going on, so just hold on with us for just a minute. All the board members?
Board members.
Superintendent, staff?
Yes, of course. Absolutely. It's a great sign of you guys being here and happy to. Yep, we'll take the picture from over here. Jump up there. Me too. Should.
Joe, you got to find a window.
opportunity to recognize some of our outgoing board members. Being a board member is sometimes a thankless job. You work hard, and sometimes you're not appreciated. We're elected not in certain categories, but we're elected by the whole community. We represent the whole community, and many times, we are not given our due. But we thank you for your outstanding leadership, your time, your dedication, your commitment. You have shown individually and as a group how much you care about children, how much you love what you do. I personally appreciate the time that I have had to share with each and every one of you on this board, and especially those of us who will be leaving the board. We thank you for your outstanding work. Please don't let anyone ever say that you have not done a job well done, because you have. We know you have. The students of Akron Public Schools know you have, the staff, even the superintendent knows you have.[1415.35][1415.35](Laughter). So we're just grateful for your commitment and your time well spent. And so at this time, we want to honor, by way of resolution, the following persons. And if Morgan Lasher would come forward, and I know your family was here, did they leave?
I think, yeah, maybe it was screeching.
Oh, okay.[1449.47][1449.47](Laughter). Resolution of appreciation for Morgan Lasher. Whereas Mrs. Morgan Lasher was appointed as a member of the Akron Board of Education on February 20th, 2018, to fill the unexpired seat left vacant by the resignation of John R. Ottoman, and whereas Mrs. Lasher played a significant role on the board, capably serving as co-chair of the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee, and whereas Mrs. Lasher devotedly attended meetings, events, and celebrations held by schools and community support groups, including the opening of two new community learning centers; and whereas Mrs. Lasher served the Akron Public Schools with distinction, integrity, helping to facilitate an environment in which decision-makers could do their jobs effectively and efficiently. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Section 1, that on behalf of the entire Akron School community, sincere and heartfelt appreciation is extended to Morgan Lasher for her dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be given to Morgan Lasher, and that it be made a part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education, and done by the hands of the board members, our superintendent, and our CFO, treasurer. Congratulations.[1553.21][1553.21](Applause). And on behalf of, hold on just a second. And on behalf of the superintendent, CFO, and all of your fellow board members, and the Akron School Board family, we want to share with you this memento.
Oh, gosh, thank you very much.
Would you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you. Gosh, maybe I shouldn't say anything, I'm going to start crying. I cannot tell you how much my life will be different, my kids' lives will be different because of you guys at this table and around the room. It's an absolute lifetime honor to sit in one of those seats, but especially with the people in this room. My definitions have changed of what leadership is, of equity, my own privilege. There's so much self-exploration that happened to me over the last two years, and the service that this board and these people do every single day, it makes me really proud to live in Akron, to have kids go through Akron. And, I mean, I feel like I look at each one of your faces, and I'm reminded of all of the things that I've learned from you. I'm so glad that you're here, Nate. You've been a really special part of my journey here, and you've taught me so much, in addition to your fellow board folks, from how to lead with real integrity and service to community relationships, learning about the people that we serve. It's just, it's been an absolute honor, so thank you very much. Thank you all.[1698.95][1698.95](Applause).
And this time, I would ask that Ginger Baylor would come forward.
(Laughter).
A resolution of appreciation for Ginger Baylor. Whereas Mrs. Ginger Baylor has served as a member of the Akron Board of Education twice, having been elected to the board in November 2009 for a four-year term commencing in January 2010, and again elected in November 2017 for a four-year term commencing January 2018. Whereas Mrs. Baylor's first term was shortened when she became an administrator in the office of Congresswoman Marsha L. Fudge, causing her to resign in March 2013 after three years of service. And whereas Mrs. Baylor's second term was shortened, and she won an Akron City Council at Large seat in the November 2019 general election, causing her to give up her Board of Education seat commencing January 2020 after two years of service. And whereas Mrs. Baylor played a significant role on this board, capably serving as chair of the Finance and Capital Management Committee, and later as co-chair of the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee, and whereas Mrs. Baylor served as a liaison to the National School Boards Association Federal Relations Network, liaison to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. Federal Relations Network, liaison to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees, liaison to the OSBA's Urban School District Advisory Network. And whereas, Mrs. Baylor served on the Akron Public School Board's Building Projects Joint Board of Review during 2012, contributing to the district's successful construction project, and celebrated the opening of nine new community learning centers during her first term and two more during her second term. And whereas, Mrs. Baylor devotedly, devotedly attended meetings, events, and celebrations held by the schools and community support groups. And whereas, Mrs. Baylor has served the Akron Public Schools with distinction and integrity, always as a strong advocate for all students in the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Section 1, that on behalf of the entire school community, sincere and heartfelt appreciation extended to Ginger Baylor for her service in the Akron Public Schools. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be given to Ginger Baylor and that it be made a part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education, signed by your fellow board members, superintendent, and our CFO.
I couldn't leave without saying something. You guys are wonderful to work with, the board, the superintendent, everyone around this room, the many things that you have contributed to our children, our community over the years is priceless and invaluable. I just know that when some of you guys retire, you'll have great replacements, won't you? Okay? So make sure that you duplicate yourselves, because you have done a great work. So many wonderful things have come about under your leadership, and you should be proud, proud of yourselves and proud of your colleagues. So I just want to say thank you to the board, Mayor, Mayor, oh, my Mayor, Mayor. I just love little Mayor, Mayor over there, but she'd probably get tired of me calling in sometime. But you guys, I, I will miss you, but I won't miss you, because I'll just be right down the street, and I'm still gonna always be involved in Akron Public Schools, so that will never change. And you can always call on me, and if I have a moment, I will contribute it to your cause. So thank you.
Likewise, on behalf of the superintendent, CFO, and the fellow board members and the Akron School Board community, we want to give you this moment.
Thank you.
And if Jay Timothy Miller would come forward. Better known as Tim Miller. A resolution of appreciation for Jay Timothy Miller. Moses needed a Caleb and a Joshua. Joshua and Caleb held up his arms in times of difficulty. You were and are my Joshua. I have appreciated our tenure and time spent on this board. You are an outstanding gentleman, who has demonstrated your love for people across whatever spectrum. You respect them, you give of your leadership and your wisdom, which I appreciate extremely very much, because it has helped me in my time as, not only as president, but a member of the board. And for that, I personally thank you for all that you have committed to me and to this board. So, the resolution says, whereas, Tim Miller was elected to the Akron Board of Education in November 2011 for a four-year term commencing January 12th, and was re-elected in November 2015 for an additional four-year term commencing January 16th. Whereas, Mr. Miller served as vice president of the board during the 2017 and 2019, and whereas, Mr. Miller played a significant role on the board, capably serving as the School Climate and Student Services Committee, and later as the chair, co-chair of the Finance and Capital Management Committee. And whereas, Mr. Miller chaired an ad hoc Student Behavioral and Discipline Committee established in January 2018, which later evolved into the Portrait of an APS Graduate Committee, to study the successful Akron Public School graduate through the lens of behavior, discipline, and safety. And whereas, Mr. Miller served on the Akron Public Schools Building Projects Joint Board of Review from 2012 to the present, contributing to the district's successful construction project, and celebrated the opening of eight new community learning centers during his tenure. And whereas, Mr. Miller devotedly, devotedly attended meetings, events, and celebrations held by schools and community support groups. And whereas, Mr. Miller served the Akron Public Schools with distinction and integrity, helping to facilitate an environment in which decision-makers could do their jobs effectively and efficiently. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron School Board, School District, Section 1, that on behalf of the entire Akron school community, sincere and heartfelt appreciation is extended to Tim Miller for his dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be given to Tim Miller and that it be made a part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education, done by your fellow colleagues and by superintendent and the treasurer. And again, thank you.
Everybody at the table knows I hate this, concentrating on me. I just want to say thank you for everybody at the table, and the administration, everybody around the room. Akron Public Schools been here for over 170 years, and I think it'll be here for another 170 years. It's a, these seats are important, but they always change, and they always change for the good. Thank you.
And again, on behalf of the superintendent, CFO, all of your fellow board members and the Akron School Board community, want to share this momento with you as well.
And now I have to follow that. If Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr., please join me at the podium. This is dated December 9th, 2019. Whereas, Doctor, Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr. has honorably served as a member of the Akron Board of Education for five terms, for a total of 20 years, from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, Reverend Walker has provided stable, continuous, and effective leadership as a member of the Board of Education. And whereas, Reverend Walker's personal commitment, leadership, and concern for children have had a profound impact on the welfare of children of the city of Akron. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron School District, Section 1, that the Board of Education extends its sincere thanks and gratitude to Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr. for his exemplary service to the Akron Public Schools and the Akron community. Section 2, that the Board of Education, in honor of Reverend Walker's service, hereby names this boardroom in the Sylvester Small Administration Building, the Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr. Boardroom. And Section 3, that this resolution be made a part of the permanent record of the Board of Education, and that a copy be given to Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr. Signed by our board and our administrators, once again, December 9th, 2019. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve all of those resolutions by acclamation.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Thank you. With the election of Ginger Baylor as a councilperson at large, there will be a vacancy on the school board. The Board of Education members and those who have been recently elected in our retreat discussed how we might be able to have a smooth transition, and how we might be able to fill that slot. And so we would like to make the following resolution recommending a candidate to fill the board vacancy. Whereas, in the general election held in November 5th, 2019, Mrs. Ginger Baylor, a current Akron School Board member, won a seat as council at large with the city of Akron. And whereas, effective January 1st, 2020, Mrs. Baylor's school board seat will become vacant for the remainder of her term, January 2020 through December 2021. And whereas, per Ohio Revised Code, Section 3313 dot 11, the Board of Education must act to fill such vacancy at a regular or special board meeting, held at least 10 days after the vacancy occurs, and must act to fill the vacancy within 30 days to be considered a valid appointment. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School, Section 1, that the current board supports the appointment of Deanna, Deanna Audrey. Diana Audrey, thank you, as a member of the Akron Board of Education to fill this vacancy within the timeframe specified by the Revised Code, 3313 dot 11. Section 2, that the board members seated effective January 2020 will concur with this opinion to be made, to make such appointment. Now, this is the desire of the current board. We, it's not binding on the board that will be seated in January, but that is the opinion and desire of the current board. So, at this time, I need a motion.
So moved.
Has been moved.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
So Mrs. Audrey, yes. You're welcome to sit a little closer if you would like. We don't have a seat at the table yet, nothing's official, but if you want to ease a little closer, or you can sit where you are, either way, it's fine. Thank you. Yes.
Well, and I don't want to say a lot. I would like to thank the LeBron James Family Foundation for the Kleenex this evening. I promise I'll wash it, and please don't pick this one up by mistake. But I, I don't think any of us wanted to let the moment go without sharing our sincerest thanks. Two of you, well, three of you, I've had the privilege to serve with for almost my entire eight years on this board, and Morgan for the last two years. And what a pleasure it's been, and I, I wish I could have wrapped all of your comments into one and spoke them for myself, because you each said part of what was in my heart, I think, tonight. But, you know, Morgan, about how much you learn from each other, about what it means to be a leader, to sit around the table, to be part of a solution, to, just to really be engaged and there and thinking about the kids in this city. And, and Ginger, I know that we'll continue to have a relationship with you and to work together, and I look forward to that. In fact, I think this could be a real asset for us, to be, to have you as part of council and to be able to have that close relationship. We've always had a good relationship with them, I think this makes it even better. And Tim, you said it best, I mean, these seats change all of the time, none of us are going to be sitting here forever, but you always hope that they change for the better, and I think that they have. I'm so looking forward to the new folks around the table, and hopefully to Ms. Audrey in January. It's so exciting to be a part of that. It is bittersweet, right, because we've worked together for so long, and I might have teared up a few times for, tonight, for all of you. It's very bittersweet, but it's, it's, it's something to look forward to. Change is good. One of our former board members used to say that, change and agitation, it's good, and, you know, it all stirs things up a little bit for the good, and so I look forward to that. Thank you so much for everything that you've done and for the leadership and guidance each one of you has provided.
Any other comments or expressions?
I'd like to thank all of you as well. When you sit around a table and work with a group of individuals, all of us come from various walks of life, but come to the table for one common good, which is our students, that's important, and when we keep that in mind, it's very nice, because we all at one time had some individuals in our lives, and particularly someone in education, who probably touched our lives, and it's because of them that we're here today. And so with that, I'd like to say thank you to all of you who are leaving. Ms. Lasher, who I've got to learn and meet, and we've become close as friends in a short period of time. Your knowledge, your wisdom, your understanding, and your willingness to learn has been very, very good, so I appreciate all that you have done and being side by side with me on the policy committee, so thank you very much. Ms. Baylor, my, we call my partner in crime, we did a lot of traveling in the past, trying to bring some good things to Akron Public Schools, on the, from the national level, for the National School Board, Cube, all of those places, and even locally. You'll be missed as well, but as Patrick said, you are right down the street, and I think this is a good thing for us to have you there on the City Council at Large, serving them as well as helping to support us here in Akron Public Schools and our students. Tim, who, I really learned to like you a lot, you have done a, I don't mean, I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean that in a very positive way, because I really like that you're your own person, and I love people who are like that. I like to see people who are their own individuals, speak from the heart and be sincere in what they do. And you, you've done a lot, you've done, you've brought a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience to our, our policy, our, uh... I can't even get it out right. Our Finance Committee and that group has been very, very strong because of you. You came in and just been very strong, so appreciate all that you do, we'll miss you as well, and so hopefully you won't be too far away as well. Dr. Walker, you propelled me to the national level, and I don't know if a lot of people realize that, and I hadn't said anything about it, but when I first came on the board here, Reverend Walker asked me and suggested to me that I need to go to Cube, and when he said Cube to me, I was thinking he talked about a Rubik's Cube or something of that nature, and I thought, how do you go to a Rubik's Cube? But it was the Council of Urban Boards of Education, and from that organization, I have gained a lot. And if it wasn't for Dr. Walker suggesting I go there, that I became part, that I wouldn't have been able to serve on the Steering Committee for seven years, the Vice President of the Steering Committee for a year, and the President of the Steering Committee for a year. And so I always contribute, and anyone says to me that you did some other things, you had opportunities, I say, yeah, it was Reverend Walker who came to me. had opportunity, I say, yeah, it was Reverend Walker who came to me when I came on this board and said, you need to go there. And so, Reverend, I want to thank you very much, because that's a big achievement, and to be able to serve on a national board is very big, and I owe it to you, and I want to say thank you, and again, you will be missed as well. Thank you.
I love how they went and got the tissues when they knew I was going to die. I'm going to try to hold it together. I'm not going to say too much specifically, because then I will really cry. One of the things I love the most about serving on this board is getting to think outside myself, getting to see things through other people's eyes, getting, having a bond and a trust that's strong enough that you can be yourself and that you can take those risks and let yourself listen and be open to everyone's views. And all that all of you have brought to the table has been amazing. We're going to spend some time honoring Reverend Walker at our January meeting as well, and I'm thrilled about that. But I just, I don't believe in goodbyes, and I'm so glad that y'all aren't going anywhere. Ginger's done this to me twice and left me, so I'm not even going to look at her. I'm going to miss the Wonder Twins here and their interaction. I love the view that Morgan has brought to the table and the refreshing breath of fresh air that she was just when I needed it, so thank you for that. See, talk, I knew if I started doing individuals, I'd go to pieces. I remember, I came home from a board meeting recently, it wasn't too long ago, and another board had done an appointment, and I was tagged in a Facebook post, and all I saw is that I was, it came up as my face, and it said Akron Board of Education. I'm like, oh, man, what did we do now? And so, I pulled it up, and what it was, it was a picture, and it was someone who was complaining about the diversity of their board, who had just made another safe appointment. They'd just done whatever. And we were being held up as an example of having different views and different voices at the table. And I know with the new faces and voices we have that that is secure, and I'm thrilled about that. But I thank you for the voices that you brought, and you know that the ultimate thank you from me is going to be, if I quote musical theater at you. So, I'm going to just say that because I know you, I've been changed for good. So, thank you for all that you've done for us and for me personally and for this community.
Any other reflections?
I love you, Reverend. And I'm glad that this boardroom is going to be named after you. You have just done so much, and you have so much passion and love for the district, the children, and everybody around this table, and everybody around the walls of this table. I mean, you just embrace everyone. And what Bruce was saying was so true, because even when I came on, you're like, oh, get involved, Black Caucus, this, that, and the other. So, you are very motivating and inviting, and you know, you help facilitate leadership in other people. And I appreciate that, because I've learned a lot by watching your leadership to help me develop. So, I mean, you've been a great leader, you know, under the time that I've served with you, and from what others say, you know, even before that, and I'm sure that's all true. And I just thank you so much for all that you have brought to us and the district, and I just want you to know, I truly love you.
Thank you.
I love him.
Let the record reflect. Any other comments? If not, we'll thank you so very much, and we'll move on to our communications. We have someone representing the Arizona State Census Bureau who will give a presentation.
Thank you.
I don't have enough of these to go around, but I still have some of my business cards to go around as well.
My name's Kent Camino. I'm with the U.S. Department of Commerce, U.S. Census Bureau, and I'm a partnership specialist. I focus on Summit County and specifically also Akron, Ohio. So, thank you for allowing me to speak briefly with everyone. As you might know, the 2020 census is coming, but we have been diligent in going around, working with highly elected officials, organizations such as United Way and other grassroots organizations to get the information and education and awareness out that the 2020 census is coming. More specifically, that the 2020 census is safe, it's easy, and it's important. It's safe because it is one of the, it's the, since the U.S. Constitution came about, it's mandated by the U.S. Constitution, and that same mandate also guarantees the protection of that data. We do not share any information outside of the census, any individual's data outside of the census to law enforcement, immigration, or any other agencies or departments outside of the U.S. Census, not even the Homeland Security or Immigration. So, and specifically, the privacy and confidentiality aspect, we do not divulge any information because of our oath of office, from myself to those who work in the field, collecting census information. We are mandated not to do that, or we face stiff penalties or fines. Now, the 2020 census is important and vital. It's mandated to be counted every 10 years, so that the annual census is next year. It's not just important for apportionment of seats of Congress and redistricting, but also allocation of at least $675 billion each year using census data to programs and services, infrastructure such as schools, roads, programs like Head Start, you name it, using census data, also for like community development block grants, just to name a few. So, it's vital that we get everybody counted once in the right place and at the right time. So, we're working now, and especially with trusted voices in the community, such as everybody in this room, to get the education and awareness out of how important and safe the census is. We are relying on these community voices to work with us, or specifically myself in Summit County, to not just spread the word out through your networks or your social media or anything like that, but also any organizations that you are aware of, whether it's a, you know, local scout troop, book club, or parent-teacher organization, just to name a few. So, the more that we can get the information out to the communities, the better, to let them know that the census is important. Also, one of our, if you've seen your packets there, one of the programs that we are utilizing for the first time is our Statistics in Schools program. This is a program that is, kind of helps supplement the curriculum using cross-curricular activities ranging from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, and it was created by teachers, for teachers. Everything is customizable and free and online. It's a great way to empower students and also even adult educators to get the information out using census data and information to get that same type of information into the households, thereby raising awareness and education in everybody. So, this is the first census ever that's going to be used online, that people can take online. So, beginning in March, everybody, most households will be getting an invitation card with a website address and also a phone number, and they can start, you know, taking the census online. It takes no more than 10 minutes to do it. And if you don't do it, you'll get subsequent reminders, and finally, a paper form that you can fill out and also send that in. So, those are the three main ways. If we don't get any response from any of those ways, then that's when we send the field workers out to, they have to knock on the doors, to those who have not responded, to try to get the response in person or remind them to take the census online or by phone. And that's another thing, we are hiring about, I believe, 4,000 to 4,200, somewhat, something like that, in Summit County alone for those census workers. It pays at least $16 an hour. You don't have to be 18 to apply, but you do have to be 18 by the time you are appointed as a census worker. It's a federal position. It's great for students, especially those who are going to college, or, you know, it's a federal position. So, the sooner that you apply, the sooner that you can get in, because you have to go through background check and all that. And this is also, along with that, the accessibility is, the form itself is available in 12 non-English languages, and also another 59 languages that are guides and things like that. And just as a security note, I mean, we do not, the census will never ask for any individual financial information, social security numbers, bank card numbers, or anything like that. So, this is one of the messages that we're trying to get across to the communities, hopefully with everybody's help, to get that information out to the communities. That's pretty much the top-level, high-level information I want to get out. Definitely, please get in touch with me, any questions you might have. I would love to speak to as many people as I can, and especially children or those working with children, because children are one of the hardest-to-count populations that we've seen, especially from the last, from previous research and census information. So, especially under the age of five, people don't think to count children. Other hard-to-count populations, such as non-English speakers and those who are new to the country and living in low-income housing or rental housing are one of our focused areas, and especially in and around Akron. Just to let you know, it's our focus, because according to our data and research, it's, we believe that significantly about at least 30% or 30% to 35% are not going to respond to the census. So, that equates to money that could potentially have been kept here in the community for that $675 billion would go somewhere else. So, if we can get those fundings to stay in the community so that we need to get everybody counted, it's imperative that we do that. Any questions?
Yes.
So, I've reached out to you, actually. We're going to, I have to face this way, sorry about that.
Oh, sure.
I've heard, I heard a statistic today that the folks that are the hardest to count are children, seniors, and is it African-American males?
Yes.
It's somewhere in that range. So, we definitely need to work as partners to help this out. Do you have enough people that if we have PTAs that are seeking this information? I've reached out to you. I'm going to have the census at a booth for an expo for seniors. So, are there things that you have enough people for that we can do things like that with you?
Yeah, definitely. I'm just one here in Akron Summit County, but there are, like, I believe there's five in Cuyahoga County, so I can marshal our resources and get as many people, whatever the event is, that we can. Plus, we do have an Akron Census Office that just opened up, and where we have our recruiting team there, an operations team. And additionally, there is the Akron Summit Complete Count Committee, and they've been great. We don't run them, but they are that committee, and we help and just provide subject matter expertise, and they can marshal up their resources to also provide any assistance for any type of event to help us with the census.
Any other questions from board members?
Just a point for your information, Mr. President, that we are a member of the Complete Count Committee here in Summit County. And also, in the past, the last census, we actually got an award from the Census Bureau for our support of our local counting effort.
Thank you, sir. And there's the award.
Oh, wow, you brought it.
There is the award, and we are here to be a part of Census 2020.
Great, thank you.
Our superintendent is on the Steering Committee. I am one of the Complete Count Education Outreach Team, headed up by Summit Education Initiative.
Yeah.
So, we are very excited. This award actually came by way...
And I don't want to interrupt you. If you can just go to the mic and say some of the things. I always think I talk so loud. Okay. This award came by way of the work of Karen Gjigic's content specialist, Adam Mader, who really provided a full teacher guidance document on how to incorporate lessons with the census. He's already reviewed the website and is very excited about the tools that are being offered this year. Another component we're excited about is the use of our family liaisons in schools, because we want to leverage those relationships with our families to do that outreach work. And in fact, a couple of them have actually applied to be census workers. So, we'll be working with our Communications Office to push out promotional material as well, and certainly want to invite the census staff to the many events we'll be holding throughout the January through March timeframe. So, I fully expect to bring another one of these into the district after the April 2020 census. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we doing anything extra for our bootneese and for our immigrants who have come, who particularly are concentrated in the North Hill area? Are we doing anything special to...
Yes, I've been doing a lot of work up there, specifically working with like the International Institute and Asia Inc., and they work a lot with that community. I've been like hanging out at the Exchange House and different libraries and even, so definitely, but that's just one, you know, certain different avenues that we can approach to leverage other facets where that community, you know, we can engage them, such as churches and other events that, you know, where they might be. And not just for that community, but other communities as well, that I'm hoping with everybody's help here that I can get to.
And since Sister Mansfield mentioned about black males, are you doing anything about in the barber shops and other places where black males may congregate to get the word out or get literature there?
Yeah, definitely. We're, I'm getting down to the grassroots level, to businesses and things like that. I've just recently met with Akron Urban League like a few months ago, and then different churches where we have recruiting events as well in the area, specifically in around Akron. So, and as many events or other organizations, please just send them my way or let me know that you have any ideas about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
At this time, we need to, and a motion for the approval of our previous meeting minutes for November 18, and our special meeting minutes for November 25.
So moved.
Has been properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
At this time, we have our personnel recommendations from our superintendent.
Uh, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16. I would also like to point out in category 16 that I regret to report the death of La Jean Smith on Thursday, December 5th, 2019. Ms. Smith was an employee of the Akron Board of Education for 23 years as a bus driver and for the last 15 years as a bus assistant.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Uh, first of all, I wanted to recognize the resignation of Ms. Sharon Connor, who is going to go on to City Council. Miller South's loss is the city's gain. So I, I look forward to seeing the work that she does in Goodyear Heights. I know, I, I wonder if I would be at this table if I had not met Sharon Connor. She is a force of nature and a force for good. So just wanted to point that out. She made a huge difference in my life at Miller South as well. So just wanted to say that. Also, I was wondering if Mr. Pendleton or the superintendent could talk a little bit about item 5.7, the funding revision with the Student Wellness and Success Funds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and Board Member Mansfield. 5.7 is the funding revision. It has to do with the success and wellness funds as we talked about with the governor's new budget and initiative. The staff members and items that were reclassifying represent about $5 million, the additional success and wellness funds. The reason that we're doing that is twofold. One is you see that the success fund is Fund 467. We actually put that into our recommendation because we have to have the fund established by the board to signify where those monies are being spent. And then two, we've specifically mentioned those folks being paid for with this temporary set of monies as being directed by the Department of Ed and the Auditor of States. These monies will carry over for the remainder of this school year and next school year and then we'll have to likely make another resolution for the new biennium. But it is symbolic of what we're going to be talking about in the finance report also about, these are temporary monies. The state didn't provide any school, let alone Akron Public Schools, any additional state funding money. So these are temporary restricted dollars and that's why we're passing a resolution like that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information. Any additional questions?
Yes, I just want to have a comment on, also on retirement resignation of Rhonda Black, who is out in the front and she is the voice of Akron Public Schools. Because for a number of years, when you called into the board, she's the one who answered the phone, always pleasant, always nice, just very nice young lady. So want to say congratulations to her and good luck with her retirement as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. At this time, we need to have a motion to approve the recommendation.
We did it.
We did that, okay. I'm sorry, we're on the question. All those, roll call?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
So moved. Has been properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Yes?
I just wanted to point out item 19.7. That's very exciting for the NFL Foundation donation to East Community Learning Center.
Yes.
And I'd just like to also point out one of the items, 20, 2112, which is also 1912 in the consent. Just as an example of things that happen with our budget that aren't budgeted. With, with our pledge of our improvement money to the bond debt service, we don't really have a, a fund set aside for these kind of things anymore. So they tend to come out of general fund as this one is. So just shedding some light on just things that happen, much like running your own household, things happen. If you don't have money set aside, it comes out of your general fund. And we are using general fund money for these kinds, you know, plugging holes in the dykes, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? We have the experts with us here. I spoke to them on the way in this evening about the boiler and I know he's constantly making sure that we keep a flow, that our buildings are in good use and that we're moving along. But as Mr. Miller mentioned, these are not funds that we have. You know, we have to now pull from other areas to make sure we get those things taken care of. And in this case, as you see, it's an emergency situation that we need to act quickly so that our, our buildings continue to function, our students can continue to learn and staff and administrators to serve. So any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
So moved.
So.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I just can't stop myself tonight, I guess. I just wanted to recognize the First Energy Agreement is in this consent agenda. So just, you know, we've celebrated, we've, they're, they're already rolled up sleeves and gone to work, but I just wanted to not let a moment go by without thanking them again for their commitment to College and Career Academies and to Kmore Barfield.
And also just keeping on the cutting edge of technology and ways that we analyze and really make data-driven decisions in the district. You guys will have seen that this is also where we're approving Forecast 5 and really getting into that on both sides of the House on curriculum and finance. So we're really excited about that and can't wait to see how we, how we start seeing the data come in through there.
Any other questions or comments? If not, roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Uh, yes, but just abstain from 23.25, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Okay, our superintendent's report?
Uh, no report tonight, Mr. President.
President's report, none. Our treasurer's report?
As many of the board members mentioned tonight, you have a thankless job sometimes and sometimes you're called on to do some homework from the treasurer. Unfortunately, this homework needs to be acted on tomorrow. So you have a due date tomorrow. Some of you have been following along with the Ed Choice and Scholarship deductions from school funding. And districts in Ohio are experiencing, experiencing increases in the number of Ed Choice vouchers being deducted from state payments has recently exploded. At the same time, funding has been frozen, as we just mentioned, with the success and wellness funds at FY19 levels. Basically, no additional state aid has been made available to cover the state increase in the voucher program. And so let's put some numbers to this. And then I've included, much as we have on House Bill 305, some call to action that together we need to make some phone calls tomorrow. Working into this school year, there were 120 buildings statewide that qualified for Ed Choice. As of right now, a few weeks ago, there were 1,200 school buildings. In the school year 2021, Akron Public Schools will have 34 Ed Choice eligible schools, six more than our previous fiscal year. So let's start to put some numbers on how that may impact us.
And as you're reading, if you can give us, not just for our new board members, but for people who are listening, what is Ed Choice?
Ed Choice, there's currently about 60,000 state-funded scholarships that are provided, I would say 60,000 prior to this school year, for students who attend low-performing schools to receive a tuition voucher to take to a non-public or a private school. The laws and the rules around Ed Choice and the scholarship program have changed literally overnight. It was a last-minute add to House Bill 166. And many of the legislators that we've talked about are unaware of its impact. And it's gaining momentum all around Ohio. And we'll talk a little bit about, just in the final few paragraphs, about the impact on Akron Public Schools. And it is significant and potentially catastrophic. There are school districts in Ohio, one of which we talked to last week, that has 1,000 kids in their district and they have 120 new students qualify for next school year. So you can imagine 10% of their revenue that state-funded is at risk. There's districts that have one private school in their community. And the expansion of the Ed Choice Scholarship Program now allows for a student who has never stepped foot inside of Akron Public Schools, who has attended a private school from kindergarten on, to qualify for this voucher of any one of the 34 schools now listed. So this potentially, it, you see in the last sentence, already we're calculating its impact at almost seven figures, but it's likely to grow without a call to action. For each Ed Choice-approved student, the Department of Education deducts $4,600 for a K-8 student and $6,000 for a 9-12 student. ODE receives 1,700 applications from families residing within Akron Public Schools, 486 of which were new Ed Choice applications. This is an overall increase or a net increase of 193 from the prior year. The application opens up in February of next year for the 2122 school year. I expect this to grow pretty significantly. So our homework assignment is attached. OSBA, BASSA, and OASBO, of which started a steering committee of when we were at the Capitol Conference. There were over 170 in attendance and again, we met last week for this call to action. And there's hyperlinked resources. This will go out in your email tomorrow morning to our current and newly elected board members. And those calls to our state representatives are much appreciated. There's talking points. If anybody wants any additional help tomorrow, please let me know. That concludes my report. Thank you.
So we have homework and if we need help in getting a clear vision of the talking points, please see our CFO, our treasurer, so that we might be able to sort of stem the tide on this potential financial drain on, you know, the Akron Public Schools. Thank you. Committee reports, are there any reports from legal, contracts, and board policy?
No, we will be meeting next Monday, the 16th, though.
Financial and capital management?
Yes, we do have a report. Finance Committee of the Akron Public Schools met on December 4th with the following members present, Patrick Bravo, myself, Reverend Walker, Valerie McKittrick was there, as well as David James and Ryan Pendleton. Following information was reviewed and with highlights. We, we talked about Forecast 5, which Patrick mentioned. We just passed, okay, and the purchase of that. Forecast 5 provides software and support that will help the district achieve a greater sense of transparency, transparency and equity. By utilizing Forecast 5, the district will have the opportunity to reduce contracts with several other companies where there will be overlapping services. We also had a discussion on the forecast. The committee continues to review the possibility of a levy. The group reviewed past levy materials for reference and different millage and levy types. The Finance Committee looked into the Ohio Department of Education benchmarks for fiscal watch, fiscal caution, and fiscal emergency. Mr. Pendleton will continue to research how this may impact our district. Mr. Pendleton also will continue to review information and a timeline related to possible levy during his treasurer's report at each upcoming board meeting. And lastly, we talked about and reviewed the possibility of moving additional scholarships that Akron Public Schools still holds and moving those to the Akron Community Foundation in much the same way that we moved the Resnick Funds recently. So that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments about that financial report, Finance and Capital Management Committee report? Hearing none. Thank you. Instructional policy and student achievement?
No further report.
No further report. Unfinished business? We do need to go into executive session per revised code 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering dismissal of a public employee or official of a school district in G3 to meet with board legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. I need a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved, properly moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Please, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Before we go up to our normal executive session meeting place, we want to recognize the Boy Scouts and their scout master that's present. My assumption you're here to receive maybe some of your badges by attending a board meeting. You might want to just come up to the podium and just let us know who you are, what board scout you represent. I know you weren't prepared, but.
You're always prepared.
They're all, I'm sorry, you are always, I'm sorry, you are always prepared.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am, first of all, APS proud. I am school counselor at Jennings Middle School. My name is Doug Meredith. And I know we have some former Jennings people on our board, so, yay, North Hill. I'm also scout master of Troop 48. We meet at Wedgewood United Methodist Church and we do have some young men working on citizenship in the community and Communications Merit badges. So they got to see a town hall meeting tonight in action. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to our meeting place for our executive meeting session.